November thirteenth, regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. And for items that are not public hearings, I will provide an opportunity for the public to comment. Okay, you're doing the roll call?
I'll do the roll call, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Kempin?
Here.
Mr. Crent?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shepke?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
All right, item number two, the approval of the agenda. Chairman, I move the agenda as prepared. Mr. Schultz?
Second.
Mr. Shepke?
Seconds.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Item number three, the approval of the minutes. You've all had a, excuse me, a chance to look at the October 23rd special study meeting minutes. Any comments or questions? And if not, can I have a motion? Mr. Hudson? I'll move the approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Was it Mr. Crent that seconded?
Yeah, yeah, I got it in there just a second before Ed did.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
All right, item number four, public comments for items not on the current agenda. Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to speak for items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move to item number five, the preliminary site plan review. Proposed Beechwood Estates Site Condominium, ten units per lot, ten units lots, west side of Beech Road, a thousand feet south of Long Lake, Section 18, currently zoned R1A, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. As the chairman alluded to tonight, our first item for discussion is proposed tenant-lots Site Condominium Project off Beech Road. The planning commission should be familiar with this project, as this is at least the second time the planning commission has seen this. The first time the development came in...
Give Mike, excuse me.
Thank you. The first time it came in, it was done under a conventional eight-lot subdivision or site condominium. After discussion with the planning commission, the applicant has come back and offered a cluster-type development. The cluster is a new site condominium technique that was put into the zoning ordinance in the last draft, and this site lends itself to the cluster technique and is the preferred development option. And the reason for that is the site cluster option allows for the preservation of open space and natural amenities which this site loses itself to. By right, the applicant is allowed to do eight units or eight lots, which this, done on the site cluster, this would provide at least a minimum of 30% open space. The applicant is asking for 10 lots, which is a two-lot increase in density. However, for providing this density increase, they have to offset it by providing at least 50% open space. I do want to note that this two-lot increase is a discretionary bonus granted by the City Council based upon a recommendation of the planning commission. However, because the applicant is only providing 41% open space, the matter has to go before the zoning board of appeals to determine if the planning commission and ultimately the City Council can even grant a variance to allow the planning commission and City Council to consider this density bonus. So the zoning board of appeals is only considering whether or not the planning commission can even consider a density bonus. It is not granting the density bonus by going through the variance process. So tonight, because it has to go to the zoning board of appeals next week, the planning commission tonight cannot take action on this matter, but really is only asked to comment on the site plan as shown. With all that being said, we do strongly encourage the development as the applicant has shown it in the site cluster option. We support it because it proposes to preserve a significant amount of open space as well as a significant amount of tree cover in the area that would be removed if it done under conventional lot layout. That being said, the applicant is deficient by at least 9% open space, and we do feel that with some slight modifications to the proposed layout, without even modifying the actual building location, but simply modifying where the lot lines are located on property, the applicant can get to that 9%, that increase in 9%. Specifically, we think the applicant, by reducing the amount of rear yard slightly, just moving this lot line over, as well as potentially reducing the width between the buildings, that is enough to get them to that increase, that 9%. Other than that, we really do find the site plan is pretty consistent with what the cluster option is trying to provide. It meets all required setbacks in terms of buildings as well as the property line, so we really are supportive of the cluster option. A few other notes that we want to add to the site plan as shown is that we do feel that the site retention, stormwater management area in this corner, should be really made site amenity, and so we ask the applicant to encourage walking trails, making that more of a bio-retention area instead of just simply your conventional stormwater retention facility. And secondly, the applicant is proposing a significant amount of open space in the corner, northwest corner of the site, I'm sorry, yeah, northwest corner of the site. We ask the applicant to provide a walking path between lots six and seven, so this open space is accessible to all the members of the subdivision. In addition, the applicant is requesting a waiver to not provide a sidewalk along Beech Road. There are no sidewalks along Beech Road, so this matter has to go in front of the traffic commission, as we've discussed before. In addition, a very small comment, there was a tree proposed in a location in this corner, right by the stormwater detention facility, which is located where the access drive to the detention facility was to be located. So they'll simply actually have to remove that. So in conclusion, we do support the cluster development as proposed. We find this is the appropriate development option for the site. That being said, we do note the applicant is deficient by at least 9% for open space, and we do feel that with slight modifications of the site, they should be able to achieve that 50% and meet our requirements.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? I have one, Ben.
Yes.
The 9%, can they achieve that only by pulling up the rear yard property line, or do they also have to reduce the width of the lots as well?
I have not done the math myself, but I do note that there is a significant area between the rear yard, the rear building line, and the rear, what they're calling the rear lot line essentially. I think, and I don't know if the engineer applicant will have to address that, that if they simply move these lines closer to the building line themselves, they probably can achieve that 9%.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crent?
One question. It shows that the rear yard setback for the buildings is required is 25 feet, and they are providing a 48-foot minimum. On those lots closest to the west that are, I guess I should have the numbers in front of me...
These lots?
No, the ones above that, that are in part of the circle cul-de-sac. Their 48-foot pushes their lot almost to the end of the property line for the development and kind of negates a pathway for the other residents on the east. Is there a way we could, you know, I mean, I don't know if, again, if it's important because it's just going to be some kind of landscape ground and people walk through anyway, but I'm just wondering why that couldn't be common ground. They would gain more of their required 9% need and not cause a thing to be invalidated as far as a setback. So, you know, to me, that would be a quick way to gain common ground. Just a thought.
Yeah, and that's something that we can let the applicant address, why they chose a lot like they did.
Anyone else? Is the applicant here? Please step forward. Well, you've had an opportunity to hear Mr. Carlisle's comments, and would you like to talk about those?
Yeah, I respectfully like to disagree with the reducing the rear yards on the property. As the unit said, they're only 135 foot deep now, and to shrink them anymore would make them more of a, I don't know, make the units a lot smaller and not cohesive with the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think it would ruin the integrity of the project to be with, to be cohesive with the neighbors. That's why we're seeking the variance for the project. We had to acquire the property behind the open space in order to get to the 41%. So to further reduce the size of the lots or units would, I think, ruin the integrity of the project in all.
Do you know how much distance it would take to move those property lines to achieve the additional 9%?
I have to ask my engineer.
Jeremy Carnahan from Professional Engineering Associates. I don't have the exact number, but the 9% is a significant portion of the site, and it's more than a few feet. It would make a significant impact on the shape and depth of these units, but I don't have an exact number for you offhand.
Now, tell me, what defines, physically defines the rear yard line or the rear property line for these units? There's, I mean, there's, I don't expect there's going to be any kind of a fence back there or any kind of a...
Spikes won't be permitted, but if they were to put it in the pool, that would be, would have to be within their unit.
Right.
City has requirements that the pool can't be so far off the back property line and any closer, this is your typical standard depth in an R1A zoning. Your standard depth on a lot is 150 feet. These are at 130 feet. So they're losing significant yardage, which is, most of it's in the front. But to give them a typical backyard that you would see in a R1A zoning is why we kept around that number. It allows them to put their deck out back, it allows them to put a swimming pool in, allows them to have a playscape for their children.
Any other questions, comments for the... Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, what if you took one of those homes out of the development? It seems to me that it would be pretty close to that 9% in and of itself, and you wouldn't need a variance.
Yes, it is.
Well, I'd still need the variance for the density increase, or I would have to go for the cluster option. To be short with you, economically it wouldn't work. I'm purchasing the rear yard of Mr. Bazun's in order to get to the density. In all honesty, I came before you at the first time with the standard subdivision that was totally within all the preview of your zoning ordinances. You guys asked me to come back with some type of different option. I thought I'd give it a shot, and we went outside the box and tried as many options as possible, and this is what we came up with, we thought was, could be cohesive. I do know I need a variance to make it work, but I still think that this is a viable plan that would still fit within the neighborhood and be something that everyone can be proud of.
Well, this certainly isn't going to be our call. It'll be the variance board, so... How about the other comments that Mr. Carlisle made about the bio-retentions in the stormwater area?
We'll do whatever we can, but the site is still tight, and we were thinking of putting a fountain in there. As far as a walking path, I see that as a hazard around the retention area versus something that would benefit the site. But, yeah, we were thinking about putting a fountain in there just to keep the water irrigated and some type of landscaping design around it.
Okay. An access path between the lots six and seven?
One of the arrangements I made with the neighbor was that we would leave this as a natural area for wildlife, so no access to it.
Well, I guess I don't necessarily see that the two are in conflict, but we're talking about pedestrians back there.
I can readdress that with them, because it was, it was specific that we had no access. It would be left natural.
Okay. What's your, what's your schedule, your plan? If you get approval on these, are you going to build all units at one time? Are you going to phase it? How do you see this happening?
It's only a lot site, so we would start, we would start with a model and do like our normal subdivisions, where we'd start and build it out. We only foresee like a year, a year and a half build out for the project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Well, I really want to applaud you, because I know it was at our suggestion that you came back, although I will remind you that the original was only for eight units and not 10. So you do, and you're doing everything you can to get the bonus. I guess, I don't quite understand, if I owned one of those units in there and there was no way for me to even access that open space area back there, you know, to me, that could be a really huge site amenity, you know? It's like an open park area, an environmental area, and all you'd have to do is even reduce those, the rear yard setbacks by 10 feet, so people could at least walk behind their own lot and go back to that area, or to have an access path. I, I, you know, if I were buying a unit in there, I would certainly see that as a deficiency rather than an asset.
I can readdress that with the neighbor to see if he'll allow just a walking path.
And the neighbor is?
Mr. Bazun.
The one with, who you purchased that property from? Okay, thank you.
I think from a practical matter, if people want to go back there, doesn't need a path, they're going to walk between people's homes, so, you know, maybe if we can control that a little bit in a way. Any other comments, any questions? Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, I'll add a comment. I mean, I do think there's a lot of value just in having that undeveloped space, but from a general development standpoint, it does sort of seem like we're just taking somebody else's land and locking it down to help get that bonus on this property, which was original, and that just seems like it's not quite the right way to do this sort of thing and use the rules to get that bonus. That's my general thought, although I am impressed with the development and it looks good. I like the layouts and the modifications you've made, so in that respect, it's a great development.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
And I also want to reemphasize, I am so pleased that you're leaving some of those huge red oak trees there, and I do support the fact that we're not, you know, that we, you know, really, in that area, there's no other sidewalks in that area, and I think that's, it's a, that was a good move. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Question for Mr. Savinat or our consultant. Under the conventional result, or under the conventional build, there would be technically no open space, correct? It would all be privately-owned land?
It could be, depending on how the, you know, the, how the bi laws of the site condominium, but you're right, it could be, it could look and feel like a typical, quote-unquote, typical subdivision.
I'm looking here, they're providing 41% open space as opposed to 50%. Well, that's actually an 18% deficit from the 50%. It's not 9%. The difference is 9%, but if you take 41 as a percentage of 50, it's 18% less land than the ordinance calls for, so it is a substantial variance. I personally like this layout better. I would also like to see some sort of a pedestrian path into the open space, because I'm sure that, I would bet that the person you purchased the land from is going to continue to have access to it and will use it, and I think the people whose development owns it should have access to it also. But I just wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, they're 9% short of what's required, but that's actually 18% that, less than they're supposed to have, which is pretty substantial for two additional homes, which are going to make a great deal of money on.
Mr. Sanzika, did you have a question?
I was just curious, did you anticipate the basin being wet? I can't tell from the...
Yeah, that's what our intentions are, right?
Wet detention pond.
Yeah.
Well, it's not going to have a lot of standing water. If there's wetness, and it's going to just be because of a bio-retention feature, depending on how the landscape architect designs that, but no, it's not going to be permanent.
Won't be standing water there all the time.
Probably not, and nothing like three or four feet or anything like a typical detention basin.
Okay, whatever. Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds?
What type of incline on those banks, what type of incline on the banks of that retention pond?
Oh, one on six maximum.
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
I, I can understand your argument on cutting, making the requirement up off the back of those lots. If I was buying one of those homes and you were restricting my access for a nice patio or a possible pool or some other amenity back there, I can understand that argument. It's absolutely, I think, imperative that we get some kind of access, a pathway access, preferably a sidewalk to that, to make that other land usable back there, but all in all... Well, it's not up to us to grant the variance on this thing right now, but I really love what you've done with this. I mean, that's knocked down beautiful land back there that the more natural we can keep it, the better. So I can understand your argument, and I kind of support your argument on, right now, you're 20 foot short of what a standard lot would be for that kind of development, and to whack any more off of it would really restrict those backyards, so I can understand your thinking on that as far as making it something that somebody would have many options with, depending on what they wanted to do with it. So, but I applaud your drawings here. You've done a wonderful job. You've been back several times, and you've had a lot of good things to add and share with us, and I appreciate it. And I can, personally, I'm speaking for myself, seeing that shortening those lots would encumber the residents quite a bit.
Anything else?
I just had a comment for staff. I just wanted to thank staff for the wonderful flow chart. Really made understanding of the process easy. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, I think you've heard the underlying tone of all the comments is that we appreciated your efforts, and we think you've got a nice development here. Good luck with the BZA.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, Mr. Savinat?
As much as I want to take full 100% credit for the flow chart, I can't. That was Ben's doing.
Before we move to the next item, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this particular item? All right. Moving on to item number six, a preliminary site plan review, the proposed Timbercrest Preserve Site Condominium, 14 units/lots, west of Dequender, south of Waddles, west side of Fernley Drive, Section 24, currently zoned R1C, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. This is another site condominium project proposed by Mr. Maniachi, and I hope this one's a little bit easier for us to move along. The applicant is proposing a 14-lot detached site condominium project located on the west side of Fernley Road, just south of Waddles. The proposed development really is an extension of the Timbercrest Farms subdivision just to the north, and the applicant is proposing a similar lot configuration as well as lot size as what exists to the north and was approved. Site access to the proposed subdivision will be by extending the existing Timbercrest Drive with a stub at the south end to allow for future development to the south, as well as provision of a new private, I'm sorry, a new road off of Fernley Road. The lot configuration, density, and layout meet all the requirements of the R1C district. The landscaping, as provided under Section 13.02F2, is met by the applicant and all requirements for that. In addition, the applicant has met all the requirements for the site condominium standards, and these are listed in 10.02C. All that being said, there are a few issues in regards to the layout that we'd like the applicant to address moving forward. The first one is the applicant does propose a road stub at the southern end of Timbercrest Drive. We just like the applicant to address how they plan on addressing this stub. At a minimum, we think it should be landscaped, but if they have some other creative ideas, we're open to their consideration for what to do with that southern stub. In regards to the future driveway for Lot 7, and we're getting to a little more specifics here about this, but something I want everyone to be aware of. Lot 7 is this location here. It is determined it's the end of the crosswalk coming across Timbercrest Drive, so we ask that the future driveway for Lot 7 be located in the southern half of the building, so that it doesn't conflict with the crosswalk coming across the street. In addition, the last item for, for addressing by the applicant, in our opinion, is that they proposed trees located within the vision site triangle at this intersection. We asked them to relocate two of those trees that are in that, in that intersection corner. That being said, we are in support of the project, and we find that it meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, provided the applicant addressed these three small issues that we've raised.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Yes, Mr. Crent?
Just wanted to know, what does our ordinance say regarding, regarding those four trees that are required to be moved? What does our ordinance say as far as the distance back from an intersection as far as line of sight?
It's a, it's a, it's a triangle made at a 25-foot by 25-foot location of intersection, so it's essentially in this location. I believe it's nothing over three feet in height, structure and/or landscaping, so it has to be outside of that.
Is that 25-foot back from the right-of-way?
If you give me a second.
Or the curb, you know?
Yeah, I can look it up for you.
That's okay, we can go on that later, I just...
Yeah, it's, it's a 25-foot triangle, and where it's measured from exactly, I'll have to look it up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
Looking at one of the drawings, Ben, it appears that the typical driveway layout for unit number seven is already on the south side of the property.
Yeah, we asked that note just be added to the site plan for future, for reference. Thanks.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yeah, one other question. Uh, yeah, one other question for either Brent or, or Mr. Carlisle, but I was out there today and, and Fernley is a, a dirt road. Is there any obligation to pave this area at all, or did you know?
It will have to meet the road requirements of the, of the city engineering standards, which will require it to be paved. I'm sorry, did you say Fernley Road?
Fernley, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the new road. I don't believe so. I think it can stay, it can stay in its current configuration.
I believe the, the proposed development will have to meet standard, but I don't believe they have to pave any, any substandard street that's off the property.
I misunderstood you, sorry.
All right. Would the developer like to come forward?
So many asks around properties.
Anything else I can say for you?
Well, would you like, we'll go through this again. Would you like to address the recommendations from the planning consultant?
Everything was in line, and we don't have any problems with that.
Okay, all right. Mr. Sanzeca?
I don't, I'm just curious, is there a common retention area for the, for the existing subdivision?
Yeah.
My only, my only question the applicant is, and we can probably address this before final approval, is how, how do you plan on addressing the stubbing at the south end? Would you landscape it, or would you do...
Well, if they landscape it, I'd have to pull the street further back, because it, which we could. We've never done that before in, in a subdivision that we've developed in the city. I didn't know with any requirements for that. Normally, it's a guardrail, a stop sign, and a red triangle.
Mr. Crenton?
To follow up on that stub, is the reason you're doing that is because there probably will be future development south of that point?
This project's been ongoing. We started off with twelve lots right at Waddles Road, added thirty-two lots to the subdivision. Now, we're adding fourteen lots as we acquire the properties. And we've been kinda going through the backyards of most of the homeowners that are along Fernley Road and leaving some properties. This one, we happened to acquire two properties along Fernley, and so we were able to put this T Street back out to Fernley. And there is adjacent, there is more property to the south that could be combined or with the subdivision.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Just a question for Brent. In looking at the, at the overheads of the, the layouts, the lot lines at the west of this property and the east of the properties to the west of them, if you're not confused yet, don't come together. Is there a drain through there or something? A drain each ditch?
I believe there is, to the, uh...
Ag drain or something?
To the west. I believe it's, is it a county drain, Mr. Schultz?
It's the big one.
Mr. Savinat, do you know of any, anything in the city ordinances or rules that would prevent them from landscaping, holding the pavement back a little bit and putting some landscaping at the end of the road?
I don't know if there's rules against it. I think what we've, what we've typically tried to do in the past is, is, is have the developer construct the road all the way to the property line so that it's done. So, you know, because it's dedicated, usually it's, it's, usually it's a public street, it's dedicated to the city, so we want the developer to pay for it. So, we don't want to leave a gap that isn't constructed, so the next person that comes along has to, has to do it. But I mean, we can, we can, we can look into this. This is a, I think it's a valid question.
Similar to cross-access easement?
Similar, yes, similar.
Where you have to build it to the property line even though you can't drive through it?
Right.
Well, I, I think it would be a much nicer look at the end of that street if we could put some greenery down there as opposed to a guardrail and a red X or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions for the developer? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
One other question. People within three hundred feet were not notified. This is not a...
There's actually, that's a good question. There's actually no requirement that people within three hundred, actually, the requirement, this is not a public hearing. All right, so there's no, there's no one within three hundred feet that's been notified. It's just a site plan. You had an inquisitive look on your face, Mr. Edmonds.
I really have a problem with that, you know. Do the people on Fernley even know that, that this is going in?
Well, there, there's, there's no requirement that they be notified.
Okay. I think at some time, we need to address that.
Well, I, I can say this, Mr. Ed, if you don't mind, Mr. Sherman, that as soon as we get applications, we put them on our portal, on our public portal, on our website for people to look at. I mean, literally, the day we get them, we put, we put it on. So, there, there is that avenue.
Mr. Schultz?
Let's, just to clarify, Mr. Savinat, if this were a rezoning or if there were any variance needed, or they weren't building according to code, there would be a requirement for a variance, and therefore, there would probably be notice there, especially if it was a rezoning. But because they're meeting the requirements of our ordinance, there's no need to notify, correct?
That's correct. I would say, I would also add to that, Mr. Schultz, you are correct. If it was a, any, any, any action that required a public hearing, such as rezoning, as you mentioned, special use approval, planned unit development, any, any action required by the zoning board of appeals, such as a variance or an interpretation, anything that, as you indicated, required a public hearing for whatever reason, including not meeting our, our provisions of our zoning ordinance, there would be noted, there would, everyone within three hundred feet would be notified by mail. But that is not the case.
But this is basically a by-right development?
That is correct.
They own the property, they have the right to develop it as long as they meet the ordinance.
That is correct. And under our, under our, our recent, recently amended, comprehensively amended zoning ordinance, we specifically decided to treat these like site plans. So, it's a, it's a review and approval by the planning commission. It doesn't go to council anymore. With the exception of the Beachview Estates, which is previous, but that is a, that's a, but there's a bonus situation there for the cluster option. So, in that, in that situation, the planning commission's a recommending, recommending body, then it goes to council. A little confusing, but that's the reasoning behind your, behind the, the answer to your question, Mr. Edmonds.
Thank you. Thank you for an excellent presentation. Anything else? Yes?
Well, I just want to commend Mr. Maniachi. Happy to see the single-family developments go into our community. It's the only way for our community to grow and develop. And I was just curious, Mr. Savinat, has there been a resurgence of single-family homes being built?
With a, with a capital R, resurgence with a capital R.
Is that right?
With, the first, uh, the first application we had in a while, I, I believe it was Mr. Maniachi's. I, he came to me and he said, yeah, we want to get on the agenda and, you know, proceed with an application. And it had been so long, I scratched my head and I was like, what do we have, what do we do with these applications? It's, it's been so long. Definitely a resurgence. We're seeing more residential. We're getting inquiries regarding other forms of residential, such as senior housing, attached condominiums. I, as a matter of fact, we're gonna talk about a project during public, during comments tonight on a project like that, but I think there are signs that the economy's turning around.
Excellent. Great.
Yeah, one more, Grant.
For staff. There is a situation where, again, a stub-type situation, it's the Somerset North Homes that link to Bemis Elementary, and that, that was completely paved, I believe, but then they put landscaping on top of the pavement. I mean, is that, is that what we do nowadays, or is that just something that happened in the past, or...
Based on what you've told me, that doesn't, that's not like something we'd be interested in doing. We'd wanna, we'd wanna create some viable, some landscaping that has a chance to be sustainable and, yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yep.
Again, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this particular application? Okay. Move on to other business.
Resolved a resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Resolve the preliminary site condominium approval pursuant to Article Eight in Section ten dot zero-two of the zoning ordinances requested for Timbercrest Preserve Site Condominium, fourteen lots slash units south of Waddles on the west side of Fernley Drive in Section twenty-four, within the R1C, one-family residential zoning district be granted subject to the following. One, an indication of the treatment for the proposed Pinecrest Drive stub. Two, add a note to Lot Seven stating that the driveway placement shall be on the south side of the lot so as not to impact the placement of the sidewalk ramp for pedestrian crossing of Timbercrest Drive. Three, there should be a minimum of two feet from the face of, just, just a second. There should be a minimum of two feet from the face of the existing utility pole to the edge of the sidewalk along Fernley Drive. And four, relocate the four trees that are proposed for the corners of Branchmore and Timbercrest, northeast and southeast corners.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds?
Support?
Mr. Savinat?
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzeca?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Congratulations. Ben, I tried to move this along for you, but they caught me. All right, other business. On number seven, approval of two thousand thirteen planning commission meeting schedule. Everyone has had a chance to look at that. Any comments or questions? Mr. Schultz?
Will it be approved as prepared?
I'll second. Mr. Crent, second?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Item number eight, public comments for items on the agenda. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any of the things we've talked about tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move to planning commission comments, and maybe we'll start with Mr. Savinat since he has...
Yeah, could, could you all go to the last, don't shut your computers down yet. Go to, uh, the, um, the last three slides in your, in your agenda packet. There should be three drawings there.
Okay.
Is, is that, is that true?
They look familiar.
Okay, good, good. So, let me just pull this up here.
Would these be off Big Beaver?
They would be off Big Beaver.
He's got the surprise, so don't...
Well, it's not a, okay, so you all remember Big Beaver-Kilmer planned unit development. It's under construction, it's north side of Big Beaver, it's east of us. There's a Tim Hortons, and there's some retail that's going in. You'll recall that there was fourteen residential units that were approved as part of this, and they actually, as part of the PUD agreement, we actually required them to put in the utilities for those, for those units. The applicant has been unsuccessful in, in marketing the units. Consequently, they haven't, they haven't, construction has not started yet. And they were, they've met with us a couple times very informally to talk about potentially revising the layout and the design, but didn't really come up with anything concrete. They got in a dialogue with a, with a relatively, with a, I'd say, a local developer, and he said, he asked if he could kinda tinker with it and sketch up some, a design for the, for the layout. So, what you see, the first slide that's up on the screen is what was approved. You'll see that it's kind of, it's interesting, but it's, the word I use is kinda wonky, like it, you've got that curve in the building, and it's a planning term.
Technical term?
Technical planning term, wonky. It's got that, that angle to the building, and my, my understanding is there's a number of different designs that are required to kinda bring this to market. And it, it just wasn't, he, he, he kind of had some issues with how it was laid out. So, what he did is he sketched up an alternative, which is the next slide you see, with fourteen units. Does everyone have that on their screen?
Yes.
So, you'll see what, what he did is instead of having five units fronting on Kilmer, there's six units. The, the building footprints are smaller. There, consequently, there's more open space. My understanding also is that all, all the units here are gonna be two-car garages, where in the past, only some were two-car garages. So, they're able to pull more of the, more of the automobiles into the, into the garages, and where they're left with more open area. They still have the, that, that kind of corridor connection with the retail to the south. They still have that corridor connection to Kilmer. It's got that, that presence on Kilmer. It does a lot of good things. The relationship with the residential property to the north, it's no closer. And it, I think all in all, I think it's an improvement, personally. It's consistent with what was approved, and based on this concept, we've indicated to the, uh, to the developer that we can, we can administratively approve this slight modification because it's still fourteen units. It's actually, there's actually more open space, and it's very insignificant change. So, I wanted to kinda bring you up to speed on that and inform you of that. But their long-term goal, there's always a but, right? Go to the next slide. Their long-term goal is seventeen units. Now, they can't get the additional three units without going back before Planning Commission for, for a recommendation after a public hearing, and then going to council because it's an increase in, in intensity. But I just wanted to, A, bring you up to speed on what they plan to do, and, and maybe just kinda get your very, very informal feedback. And it's very informal because we've only got a pencil sketch. You know, is this something that, that you, you could support? Do you have a lot of heartburn with the additional, with the additional three units? Do you have any concerns?
What does that do to the size of each individual unit from the one that we approved?
They're smaller. They're slightly...
How much smaller?
Uh, I think it's on the sketch.
Yeah, there is a square footage, Mike, on the right-hand side.
Yeah, the, I can read it to you, Mike, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Approved plan is fourteen, fourteen units at thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand five hundred ninety-eight square, square feet total.
Oh, wow.
That's the, that's the approved. The proposed is not, fourteen units at nine thousand five hundred and twenty gross square, square feet. So, the unit footprint per unit is twenty by thirty-four, or six hundred and eighty square feet. So, they're a little smaller, and I, I don't know why, why they went smaller. Perhaps that's what the market is, uh, maybe people are asking for smaller square footages. I don't know.
Are these two stories?
These are two stories.
So, it's a six-eighty footprint times two.
Correct.
I mean, a footprint, so it's fifteen, and some change.
Size of my house.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's fourteen thousand less, four thou, four thousand feet, first foot less.
I, I've never lived in one of these complexes, but I know people that have, and their complaint is consistently parking. I understand that these are gonna be two-car garages. However, I had the pleasure of dropping someone off at the Birmingham train station on Saturday, and I found it very interesting that, that cluster development that is right there, next to the, adjacent to the railroad tracks, has done something that I found very, very interesting. They have little islands so that there are, in fact, two parking spaces outside each of the two-car garages. And I would personally prefer to see the units, the development stay at fourteen units and spread them out east-west a little bit so that they could get some parking outside the garage doors, because this little tiny parking bay that might hold seven or eight cars up at the north end of that development is totally insufficient for this residential development of fourteen units. I've lived in condos all my life. Parking is always the issue.
And I am in no way speaking on behalf of the, of the applicant, potential applicant, because my, at first blush, I thought the same thing you did. And I, that was one thing I indicated to them, was they're gonna have to demonstrate that the parking's gonna work. And they, in their, in their very brief dialogue, they did remind us that there are six on-street spaces, on-street parking spaces on Kilmer. There is that small parking lot to the north. And there's also shared parking that, that they have an easement for to the east of this. But that's a conversation for another time when the applicant's here. But your, your, your point is, is very well noted. I, I don't disagree.
If I lived in unit twelve, thirteen, or fourteen, I'm not gonna want my guests walking in from Kilmer, and I'm not gonna want them parking and have to park in the office building next door and walk all the way around the front of my house to get into the front door. It's just not, I mean, these aren't gonna be twenty thousand dollar homes. That's my concern.
Mr. Crent?
Just want to echo Mr. Schultz's comments. I agree. This, you need visitor parking, and I don't see it adequate, and I don't know if the, what the regulations require, but this doesn't look adequate if I had guests come over for a party.
And if I could make one more?
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
The other issue is, and we don't require it in our ordinance or our site plan, but I'd really like to know where they plan to put the snow when we have a, an eight-inch snowfall. There's no place, especially in the second drawing, there's absolutely nowhere to put the snow. Someone's gonna have to pick it up and shovel it out of the development. They're not gonna be able to push it.
Mr. Savinat, the parking that's just, would be north of the retail buildings, is that dedicated commercial parking?
I believe it's shared with the, shared, when I say shared, Mr. Tagle, shared with the residential and the retail. So, when the, when the restaurants are busy, you know, at lunchtime... So, when the restaurants are busy, you know, at lunchtime and early evening, it would probably be used by restaurants. When the residential had visitors in the evening or weekends, it would be used by residential.
Okay. Any other comments for Mr. Savinat on this? All right. Ms. Lancaster, do you have anything tonight?
No.
No?
Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving's good.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Crenn?
Just a quick comment regarding that, the line of sight at intersections. If staff could bring forth, I'd like to look at that because I've seen so many intersections in Troy where you, the driver has to actually get into the crosswalk area to see any kind of traffic coming. And it just, to me, there seems to be either a more detailed section in our ordinance to do that. I just happened to look at the state of Oregon's, how they develop their line of sight, and it's a long mathematical equation. It depends on the width of the road, the speed of the traffic, and I think they did a comprehensive job. I could bring it in for support, but I just thought that should be addressed because even in my subdivision, we have a situation going on to Crooks from your, there are some large splines that totally block the view. The only way you can see even 10 feet from the intersection is to actually get into the crosswalk with your car, and I don't think that's acceptable. But anyway, I just thought I'd mention that.
Mr. Kempin?
No comments today.
Mr. Schultz?
Comment on the part of the development we were just discussing that is under construction? And I guess it's a shame on me, and there's nothing wrong with it, but the Tim Hortons looks kind of like an orphan next to the great big building, Silver Torque Kilmer. It's very low and very small, but it is wonderful to see the development going in. But as I drive by, I'm going, boy, didn't realize that the height difference between the commercial buildings and the Tim Horton was going to be quite that great.
I wouldn't be surprised if we went back and looked at their renderings. They maybe weren't that big of a difference.
Well, renderings are interpretations.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Shepke, any comments tonight?
On this, again, getting back to this last one that Brent brought up, it's, I think 17 is really pushing it. It's really out of the question for this little piece of land. With the open area, maybe a grassy area or someplace to park along, or there just has to be more parking. And I agree with Mr. Schultz that this is just, it's just like when you buy a home, the biggest problem you run into is storage. And I think when you're in a condo situation, the biggest problem you're probably going to run into is parking. So, we need to make sure that, I think if this area is going to be viable for long term, it'd be nicer to have the extra room around it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, I just, the transit center groundbreaking, I think, is scheduled for 10:30 November 27.
I think that's right.
Are all the planning commission members going to be there?
I think so.
Is that the accurate time?
It is 10:30. I'm not sure of the date. Is it 27th, the right date?
27th, 10:30. I already RSVP'd Cindy Stewart.
You got an invitation?
Yes.
Brent, could you double-check to make sure the commission gets invited?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Carlisle?